All right, we'll go ahead and call the Planning Commission meeting of the May 25th, 2017 meeting to order. The commissioners and I want to welcome everyone. Thank you for coming down, and hopefully, we won't go to midnight tonight, but maybe we will. But you never know. So, we'll call the meeting to order, and now, we'll have the adoption of the agenda. Has all the commissioners looked at the agenda? Any additions or edits or anything? Is there a motion to adopt? There's been a motion and a second to adopt. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No? Ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Now, we're on item C, the approval of the May 11th, 2017 meeting minutes. Has everybody reviewed those minutes? They were mailed to you earlier. Any edits or additions, corrections? Is there a motion to adopt the May 11th, 2017 minutes? There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No? Ayes have it, and the minutes have been adopted. Now, we're on to item D, which is the recognition of the council members. And as I saw them come in, I saw Councilman Syracuse. You want to speak now or speak later? And then, Councilman Scott Davis, do you want to speak now or during your items or Welcome, Councilman.
I want to thank all the commissioners and the planning staff for their time. I'd like to thank my colleague for volunteering. And, more importantly, I want to reiterate, you know, that my items tonight are on consent, but more importantly, I just want to thank the staff members for their hard work and the time that they put into serving this city and coming out to community meetings and dealing with 40 of the biggest egos in town and being very nice people about it. But, more importantly, just to highlight how hard they've worked on all of these bills and with no overtime, and I just want to thank the staff and tell Kerry Logan, Bob and Doug that they have an A-plus bunch of young professionals that work for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. That's Council Lady Van Reese. Would you like to speak now? Or, come on up, welcome, Council Lady.
Thank you so much. I came in so fast, and I'm not sure if my transition lenses have changed, so. I am Nancy Van Reese, I'm the Councilwoman in District 8, and I wanted to bring to your attention something on the consent agenda. I'm looking for the number. Here it is. 2017 SP 037001, the Hickory Trails SP. It is on the consent agenda, which I'm very happy to say that it is. I just wanted to let you know that we did have a community meeting. We had lots of discussion about this, and anything that was a question or concern was resolved. It's something that we're pretty excited about on some new construction going on in Madison on Old Hickory Boulevard. I wanted to specifically speak to my respect for the developers in calling it Hickory Trails. That is part of my kind of agenda, if you will, to make sure that things are named properly to respect the history of the area. As you know, Old Hickory Boulevard actually has a trail that goes through it that was part of the Trail of Tears, and as an Oklahoman, it was important to me that we acknowledge that as well. So, I thank them for that, and I wanted to make it a matter of public record that I thank them for that and the naming of this project. But, the community as a whole is excited about it, and I appreciate your support. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Lady. Any other council members? Seeing none, we're on item E, Items For Deferral, which Bob?
We do have several items for deferral today, starting with item number two, case 2016 SP-098-001. This is a request to rezone from a specific plan to a new specific plan at 910 and 912 North Second Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 8th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item six, case 2017 SP-038-001. This is SP rezoning at 1339 South Dickerson Pike, and the staff recommendation is to defer to the June 8th Planning Commission meeting. Next item's item seven, case 2015 S-165-001. This is a request for final plat approval at 2044 Straitway. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 8th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item eight, case 2017 S-068-001. This is the Crowley Wood subdivision, Block K, Lot 6 subdivision at 426 Crowley Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 8th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item nine, case 2017 S-082-001. This is a request for a final plat to create three lots at 227 Marcia Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 8th Planning Commission meeting. Next item's item 10, case 2017 S-111-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create two lots and remove the reserve parcel status on property at 522 Radner Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 8th Planning Commission meeting. Next item's item 12, case 2017 SP-033-001. This is the Donaldson Station SP. This is a request to rezone from CL and RS 10 to SP zoning at various properties along Donaldson Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 8th Planning Commission meeting, and I will note on that, item 12, that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Next item's item 13, case 2017 SP-041-001. This is a request to rezone from RM 9 and RM 20 to SP zoning for various properties along Rural Hill Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 8th Planning Commission meeting. The next item on the deferral list is 15A, case 2017 SP-043-001. This is a rezoning from RM 20 to SP for various properties along Highway 70 South. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 22nd Planning Commission meeting. The associated case with that is 15B, case 2017 SP-044-001. This is a request to rezone from ON to SP zoning for properties located along Highway 70 South. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 22nd Planning Commission meeting. And the associated case, the third associated case is 15C, 94P-025-003. This is a request to cancel the Bellevue Commercial Plan Unit Development located on various properties at Highway 70 South. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Next item's item 16, case 2017 SP-046-001. This is a request to rezone from SP and RS 10 to a new SP zoning, new specific plan zoning, for properties at 704, 708 and 710 Dewest Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 22nd Commission meeting. Next item on the deferral list is 18A, case 68-85P-001. This is a request to cancel a PUD overlay district at 2516 Buena Vista Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 8th Planning Commission meeting. And the associated case with that one is 18B, case 2017 SP-047-001. This is a request to rezone from R 8 to SP zoning for properties located at Buena Vista Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 8th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 20, case 2017 Z-056PR-001. This is a request to apply a contextual overlay district for various properties located south of Reeves Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 8th Planning Commission meeting. And the last item on the deferral list is item 22, case 2016 SP-062-001, the Earhart subdivision and SP, which is a request to rezone from RS 15 to SP for property located at Earhart Road. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely.
Thank you, Bob. Commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral withdrawal. We'll just go through these real quickly, and Bob, make sure that I'm correct here, is items for deferral withdrawal are items number two, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12, 13, 15A, 15B, 15C, 16, 18A, 18B, 20 and 22. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral withdrawal. Need a motion to adopt? There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? No? Ayes have it, and those items will be deferred. We're on the item F, Consent Agenda, Bob.
And before I get to the consent agenda, as information for our audience, if you're not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So, as I read the following items into the record, please raise your hand if you'd like one of these removed from the consent agenda. Starting with item number one, case 2016 SP-097-001. This is a request to rezone from MULA to SP zoning on property located at 2525 Gallatin Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, and I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on item number one. Next item's item four, case 2017 SP-021-001. This is a request to rezone from RS 10 to SP zoning on property located at 98 Rose Street and 99 Evelyn Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item's item five, case 2017 SP-037-001. This is a request to rezone from RS 20 to SP zoning on property located at 630 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item's item 14, case 2017 SP-042-001. This is a request to rezone from RS 5 to SP zoning for property located at 100 Fern Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item's item 17, case 53-84P-004. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval on a portion of property located at Zermatt Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item's item 19, case 2017 Z-055PR-001. This is a request to rezone from AR 2A to RS 40 zoning on property located at 5994 Mountview Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item's item 21, case 2017 Z-060PR-001. This is a request to rezone from RS 5 to RM 20A for properties located at 115, 117 and 119 Elmhurst Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. And, last item is item 26, is to accept the Director's Report and approve the administrative items.
Thank you, Bob. Commissioners, you've heard the items on the consent agenda, but just in case, we'll go through these one more time. Bob, make sure I'm correct. Items number one, four, five, 14, 17, 19, 21 and 26 are the items on the consent agenda.
That's correct.
Commissioners, you've heard those items. Question? Yes, Council Lady?
Can I just ask one question for clarification on item number 14?
Absolutely.
That was one we had gotten, a little note that said, "Staff is modifying the conditions to reflect..." It says, "Condition number 10, building height shall be limited to a maximum of three stories." And my question is, does that replace the existing condition number 10, which deals with front-loaded garages? Is it replacing that, or is it just an additional condition?
It was an additional condition.
Okay, great.
Then, I'm good.
Thank you, Council Lady. Any other questions before we... Any other discussion? We'll need a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? No? Ayes have it, and those items are adopted on the consent agenda. Now, we're on item G, which are items to be considered for the public hearing, and, Bob, I think this means that, just to be correct, is that we have items number... We are considering tonight for public hearing, items number three and number 11.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So, first is item number three. I have to recuse myself from this item, and I'm going to pass it over to the Vice Chair for...
Hi.
Hi. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. The first item on the agenda is item three. This is a request for a preliminary SP to permit a hotel development on three parcels located at 109, 111 and 113, 29th Avenue North. This is the southwest corner of 29th and Poston Avenues in Midtown. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The existing zoning on the property is office residential intensive, which is intended for high-intensity office or multifamily residential uses and associated services. This site is also within the 31st Avenue and Long Boulevard urban design overlay in Core Subdistrict CO 1. The policy for the site is T5 Center Mixed Use Neighborhood, which is intended to preserve, enhance and create high-intensity mixed-use neighborhoods. These areas are intended to be among the most intense in the county and include Nashville's major employment centers and lodging areas. The proposal for a hotel is consistent with the policy goals in this area. As some background, this case was considered by the Planning Commission at your April 13th meeting. At that time, the request was for approval of an SP, including a modification to the height permitted in the urban design overlay. That modification is no longer part of this request. It's just an SP tonight. The public hearing was held, and it was... It remains open, and the Planning Commission offered some direction to staff and the applicant to prepare materials that helped you understand the building in context, and also for the applicant to evaluate placing some of the parking below grade to lower the overall height of the structure. So, since that meeting, there have been revisions made to the plans. The key changes are that the height has been reduced to 90 feet, consistent with the height permitted by this portion of the 31st and Long UDO, and that was done by placing the parking below grade per your direction. There have also been some revisions in the room count. It has increased from 150 to 155, but that occurred simultaneously with a reduction in the overall square footage. And then, there's been some changes in the way that the parking is accessed. It will now all be accessed from 29th with the alley devoted to service and loading. There are 127 parking spaces proposed. That does take advantage of some parking reductions that are allowed for properties in the urban zoning overlay. When uses in the UZO are within 660 feet of transit, or where residential and mixed-use areas within 1,320 feet can access this site through a continuous sidewalk network, parking reductions are available. And so, this takes advantage of those, but is compliant with the code for parking, and the traffic study was updated to reflect the changes in the parking counts. So, that's been vetted as well. So, at the last meeting, as I mentioned, there were two key issues before you. One was the modification of the height within the UDO, and the second was the SP. The SP, as proposed at this point, would require compliance with all standards of the UDO, including the height. So, the modification is no longer before you. The final SP, staff and the Design Review Committee would ensure that that consistency with the UDO standards is achieved. If, for any reason, the plans turned out to need a modification of some kind, that would come back before this body at final site plan. But, there are no modifications proposed this evening. So, therefore, the one key issue for you to consider is the SP itself and whether that's consistent with the policy and achieves a context-sensitive development. So, as we walked through last time, there are a number of overlapping policy and regulatory documents that apply to this site. We'll start with the mixed-use policy. The proposal for a hotel of this size is supported by the mixed-use policy in this location. The Midtown Study supports heights of eight or nine stories, consistent with the UDO. At this point, we're complying with the UDO in regard to height. And then, as I mentioned, this is consistent with all of the UDO standards, as proposed, and with the UDO goal for increased intensity in this area. Which finally brings us to the base zoning, the ORI zoning. Where the UDO is silent, the ORI zoning would govern. The UDO does not speak to use or floor area. So, the use is permitted in the ORI zoning district, so that's consistent. The main reason for this SP is the floor area ratio. The floor area ratio permitted in ORI zoning is three. In order to achieve the 90 feet that the UDO would permit on this height, additional floor area is needed. The SP includes a standard for a floor area ratio of five, but the plans actually depict about 4.14 floor area. You'll see a condition from staff that recommends that the floor area ratio just be established at 4.25. But, that's the primary reason that this SP is in front of you. So, per your direction at the last meeting, we worked with our staff and our mapping and GIS department to put together some visualizations of the structure. This is modeled at 90 feet. I want to be clear that it's based on the footprint that's shown on the site plan, but it is not, obviously, indicative of what the actual skin of the building might look like. There could be articulations that aren't here. So, you're looking kind of down Weston Avenue towards downtown. The orange building is the proposed, and then, this green space would be Centennial Park. These are the Parthenon Towers here. And then, this is a more direct view, looking down Poston Avenue towards downtown, kind of through the site. So, again, a 90-foot structure modeled here. And then, I do have a video as well. So, this will kind of fly you through the project. This is the 90-foot structure that you're seeing in orange, and it's going to rotate the perspective a bit. And then, the red and green lines are intended to depict a view shed from buildings in this area, looking across the site. I will note, before I start this up again, that this was prepared before the UDO modification for height was removed from the application. So, in a second, the building is going to jump to 115 feet, which was previously proposed. That's not what they're asking for now. So, this is the 90 feet here, kind of shifting over the area. So, this is 115 feet. So, the building, imagine those kind of top two boxes gone. I am going to let it continue through, because in a minute, we have added to the model... Let it get there. The green represents building envelopes, so not definite structures, but if you were to apply the standards of the existing MUIA zoning that's in place along Weston Avenue today, and just turn that into a box on the existing parcel configuration, that is a potential... What potential build-out could look out... Look like under that existing zoning. So, again, the orange you're seeing here is still at 115 feet. The structure would be lower, but this was to try to help visualize in the context of what the zoning in this area permits. So, going back. So, given that the proposal is consistent with the goals of the T5 mixed-use policy, that the site is located in an area of the UDO that calls for this intensity, and where policy and zoning in the surrounding context also support this type of intensity, the SP is consistent with the UDO, and the floor area ratio requested in the SP is appropriate given the context. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing as the applicant here. And you'll have 10 minutes. You can hold back two minutes for rebuttal.
We'd like to do that.
Okay.
Roshan Patel, 4156 Outer Drive, Nashville, Tennessee 37204. As staff said earlier, we were here about a month or a little over a month ago for 115-foot variance along with the FAR. At the point, you know, there were some conflict, so we went back to our design team, reduced the development height all the way down to 90 feet, which was required. With the opposition, obviously, they had a... The issue with... We took everything underground, the parking wise, in order to stay at the 90 feet, which I believe during the discussion was really the primary concern of the Commission. So, we were able to get that down to what they wanted. Other than that, you know, we did... The opposition will argue about parking and, you know, and reduce the parking, but generally, you know, in urban developments like this, garages are typically maybe 50% occupied because of the intense area that they're located in, rideshare, transit, things like that, taxis. So, we definitely, you know, at 127, we're probably overbuilding the parking, and in that area, you know, there's probably... There's, you know, other places of parks that wouldn't be that big of an issue, but we're going to go ahead and put the 127 in, but we definitely don't need any more than that. Other than that, I'm going to hand it over here to Bart, who's with the architectural team.
Hello. In our last meeting, just going over a couple elements, which really is just a reiterating of what you said, and I passed out a handout, and it's similar to kind of what you've seen. First, on the building height, as said, we previously requested the modification for the 115 feet. We've gone down. The developer didn't just come to you today with a half, you know, baked, going down halfway. He kind of bit the bullet, went down in the ground all the way, and that's a large cost to do that. The increase in FAR, if you notice the sheet that's passed around, the pink buildings represent what's allowed in height and massing in the UDO. The yellow represents what's allowed in the MUI. One thing to pay attention to is where our site sits. We have an unobstructed view to the park, and we are located with buildings that have an FAR of five on two sides, and we rest on a seam. And that seam is the transition from the three to the FAR of five. The UDO identifies the proposed site as a CO 1. The development character identified for CO 1 in the UDO calls for intense verticality and high pedestrian activity. In regards to the T5 MU policy, the areas intend to provide high-intensity mixed-use neighborhoods, including lodging. Traffic and parking was another issue brought up in our last meeting. We have requested a 10% reduction in parking for transit and an additional 10% reduction in parking for pedestrian. The proposed hotel is located 350 feet to Weston Avenue, where public bus service is provided. The proposed hotel is surrounded by an existing continuous sidewalk that is 1,320 feet long in multiple directions. Thus, a 20% reduction is warranted because it's located within the UZO. Our traffic engineer, RPM, presented an analysis at our last meeting. What that analysis did is he basically looked at other uses for the site, being multifamily, mixed-use and office. The office use creates a lot more traffic than the proposed hotel. The mixed-use creates more traffic than the proposed hotel, and the multifamily is similar to the proposed hotel. In addition, the following measures will take place to reduce the impact of traffic. We are providing loading and... A loading zone for rideshare taxi operations on the site proper. So, it won't be often in the meeting, and it won't be out in the rideaway. It will be on the site. You'll have to pull in, check in, park, get in and out of the building. Valley services will be provided on the site. It'll be in... It'll be at the 29th Avenue entry point. We have reviewed Metro Traffic's parking comments, and we can meet all those stipulations for the project. Due to the proposed project being directed towards business travelers, we see that a large number of our patrons will be arriving by rideshare, taxi, and the parking reduction will not have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Typically, for a parking of urban hotels at 50%, as the owner has just said. Commission, I hope you can see that our team has made considerable steps to alleviate some of the concerns of the community. In our last meeting, it was evident that the height was the issue. We did not come back with a partial solution. The developer bit the bullet and placed all of the parking below grade. The proposed project meets all requirements of the 31st and Long UDO and is consistent with the T5 MU policy.
Thank you, and you'll have two minutes for rebuttal. Thank you, and you'll have two minutes for rebuttal. Is there anybody here speaking in favor of this project? Okay. Anyone speaking in opposition? If you can come up and please line up. Ask you to state your name and address, and I understand you have five minutes?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm here, Sean Henry, 315 Dedrick Street. I'm here representing the West End Lofts II Condominium Association. Many of those folks, about nine of them were here a few months ago and spoke. They've asked me to speak on their behalf. That condominium is a 32-unit complex, very close in proximity to this subject site. My clients bought into their property, into the condominiums, and with full knowledge and reliance on the zoning that's in place there now. ORI base zoning, UDO overlay. As you know, from last month's adoption of your new policy regarding urban design compliance, you, the planning commission, are the final decision-maker on whether or not a project complies with the UDO. And we have a clear discrepancy here in this UDO. Page four says that the maximum height is supposed to be around six stories, approximately six stories. Yet later in the document, we've got a figure of 90 feet. So six stories or 90 feet, we have a discrepancy there, and we're asking you to interpret that. I've just handed out, and I don't know if it's made it around the table or not, but what I've handed out is a Google map that my client, one of my clients prepared, showing the hotels. There's about, there's 12 hotels up and down this corridor. And importantly, every one of these hotels is located on an arterial boulevard, either West End Avenue or Broadway. And so they've got that frontage directly on this major arterial streets. However, this property is at the intersection of two local streets, all right, two local streets. On here, you'll see in yellow, the UDO core. This is what we're talking about, and the relation of this property, X marks the spot, in the corner of this UDO core. And what you're being asked to do here today is to determine whether or not this particular hotel property, this particular building deserves to receive greater FAR than everybody else within this UDO boundary there, that core boundary in yellow. And by the way, the article that's on the back of this, which just came out this week from Nashville Post, states that this is a 10-story Fairfield Hotel building. So we're still perplexed as to ultimately what the height is going to be and the number of stories, because all we're seeing in the staff report now is 90 feet and no reference to stories. And we think that's important, because also, under your Midtown policy document, it talks about stories. It doesn't talk about feet. And I'll talk about that in just a second. But what you have in front of you today is an increase in rooms and a reduction in parking of about 30 spaces. So we're getting more intense on the property. Building's getting lower, yet more intensely used, with fewer parking spaces than previously proposed. Under the UDO, which is still intact, by the way, the UDO is not going anywhere, they're not canceling the UDO, and that's critically important here. Under that UDO, there's, the intent is to have scale and form create a sense of place. We think that's lacking. Minimize the intrusion of cars, absolutely lacking. And thirdly, sensitive open space relative to building mass. There's no open space being presented as part of this proposal. In your Midtown Plan, on page 35, there's three important points. It says that in this area of a special policy appropriate land uses, office and residential uses are preferred over other uses in this area because of smaller lots and tight block structure. Again, a hotel can be built by rights, so long as it builds under the current zoning. They're asking you to make an exception here. Secondly, building form, mass, talks about the intent is to enhance the urban design surrounding the park. We have no architecture here. We don't know architecturally whether there's any enhancement taking place or not. And thirdly, under density and intensity, your policy states that maximum building heights of about eight stories are generally most appropriate in the area, and punctuations of greater height may be appropriate at prominent locations. I can tell you, we've got two local streets here. This is not a prominent location, no frontage on West End. And I spoke with one of the design review committee members about their consideration of this back in January. And at no time during that discussion, when they looked at this, did they talk about prominent location in this particular intersection. So we're asking you to disapprove this. We don't believe there's a justification under the very criteria that you're charged with looking at to vary the FAR in this instance. They're asking for a bigger building than what fits on this property and fits within this core area. Doesn't meet the intent of the UDO. If you're going to suggest that this is appropriate, the appropriate method of doing this procedurally, let's amend the UDO. Let's amend this entire yellow area of core, and let's address it holistically. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Visualize. Someone said I got extra points.
Okay. No, 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 I wasn't sure if you were going or who was going next.
Thank you. My name is LaRon Rae, and I'm representing the developers of the Poston at the Park. And y'all may have seen it on today's homes this month. And then this is our project. And when we built this beautiful project, and we're half sold, and half of the people who have purchased have already moved in, many of whom moved in because of the criteria that this body has in place at this time. That is exactly what we built this under, under the rules that are in place now. So we're not here to say that we don't think we need a hotel in the area or that West End corridor. I've worked my way through college as a tour guide, and I love our out-of-town guests, and I think they're critical, as we all know, to a vibrant economy here in our town. But we do believe that our residents, and this is a residential area where we are on Poston, which is just a block away from this proposed project, we feel that there needs to be a level playing field, and everyone needs to adhere to the same rules, which we did when we built. We would just like to see a smaller facility. We're not asking for anything more than that. We would just like for it to adhere to the same rules that we have. The traffic on Poston is a situation now that, going back and forth from the park and 31st Avenue, it's just quite a busy, busy area. And so we would like to take that into consideration. Even though they are business travelers, they're still going to be using the roads and going to the restaurants and that type of thing. So we would just like to ask you to take into consideration that we all are playing by the same rules, and we have built this beautiful project, and it is residential. It is a residential area, and we thank you for your consideration, and I thank you for your time. Come see us at the Poston.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition to the project? If you can come forward, please give us your name and address.
Hi there. My name is Jeannie Heron. I'm at 207 29th Avenue North, about a half a block from this proposed site. The placement of this building is not a prominent location. If you're in this neighborhood, it is at a corner of two small streets, 29th and Poston. A prominent location, I would consider West End, maybe even 31st, but not 29th and Poston. At this intersection, where this will be, is where the disabled residents on down 29th cross to get to their grocery store. So these disabled people are blind, they use wheelchairs, and this would add so much more traffic to this intersection to make it even more dangerous. The next thing is, the width of these streets is 32 feet wide. This is going to add 175 more cars right here. 350 more people right here. It's not built for that. It's not built for that. So my question is, how is the traffic movement going to be on this street? When they get on 29th and they pull into this hotel and they can't get in, where does the, where do the cars go? How do the people get past this hotel on the sidewalk, these disabled people? Where do the emergency vehicles go by when the street is blocked like this? The last question I have is, who controls the noise control? Because these will not be residents in this neighborhood. These will be out-of-towners. They're going to come in for a night or two, and they're not going to care what kind of noise and disturbances they're going to make to this neighborhood. So please consider those things, along with the parking problems we will have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there speaking in opposition? Please come forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and express my opinion and my concerns. I'm a resident of what you saw, Poston.
Can you give us your name and address?
John Johnson.
Thanks.
3000 Poston Avenue, Unit 105. I lived there. I bought into it two years ago because it's a nice residential neighborhood. It is not 1212. I would not move into 1212. It's too busy for me. Poston, 29th, 31st, they're all have parking on both sides of the street. They're narrow. We're putting in too big a footprint and too much density into that area. What we have now is tolerable. We add on top of that, it's going to get intolerable. So I ask you to consider, little folks like me who don't understand UDO and FAR, and just understand the impact it's going to have on me, on my investment that I made in that beautiful building, which is now going to be impacted and downgraded by the additional density in the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I also like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Erin Bishop, and I live at 117 30th Avenue North, around the corner from the proposed development. It's my understanding that the proposed development is still inconsistent with the density requirements of the UDO. It remains located at the same intersection of two very small streets, and it is going to be a massive big-box structure that's going to consume nearly every inch of the three small lots that they have purchased for this purpose. Again, I concur with the folks who've spoken before me that this will significantly deviate from the residential and small office character that was envisioned for this neighborhood when the UDO was formulated. And the proposed structure does not really provide any additional benefits to the neighborhood to justify the deviation from the vision of the UDO. I, too, purchased my home in reliance on the UDO and the, specifically, the type of density limitations that it would impose. I did not expect to live next to a large hotel. I did not expect to have the neighborhood flooded with additional cars and things to support the private use that a hotel would envision. I think this will significantly increase density. It will significantly increase traffic, particularly on the weekends, particularly for people who are unfamiliar with the unique challenges of navigating the narrow surrounding streets. I'm also worried about the safety of residents in the area with having people who are unfamiliar with those streets and the use of those streets. And additionally, I'm concerned without there being elevations and them giving the broad latitude of an SP designation that we will see all kinds of lighting and other things that are going to impact the residential character of that neighborhood. So I would just ask that those kinds of limitations be considered if this is allowed to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition?
My name is Bonnie Bealik. I live at the West End Lofts II. I, too, thank you for this opportunity. I just wanted to agree with what others are saying. I'm just respectfully asking that you would adhere to the intent of the existing UDO, the envisioned office and residential uses. I feel like we need a compelling reason to deviate from this plan on behalf of those who have invested and do live in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition? If not, if you guys would like to use your two minutes for rebuttal.
All right. Just to clarify a few things, you know, as far as the building goes, you know, we are, again, like Bart said, everything is structured inside of the building, the parking, and, you know, as I said earlier with rideshare and whatnot, you know, we're not going to have that impact on the streets that everybody thinks. The hotel guests actually follow a different pattern than the normal retail or residential units. They come in, they leave very early in the morning, they come in, you know, after rush hour, and usually stay within the area. The local businesses I spoke to prior to that were in favor of it, obviously they can make it out here, were obviously ecstatic about it. That's another 200 people or so that have the opportunity, they have the opportunity to grow out that business for the Corey's Hot Dogs or Brick Tops or, and Nuke's Deli. The property tax revenues will be bringing in, are substantial. We're not asking for any government funding or TIF or anything like that, so this is all private equity, local private equity, by the way, from Nashville. So we're actually going to be contributing to the economy through property tax revenues. The sidewalks that they said, we actually, Bart can speak on that, we increased the size of the sidewalks around us. None of our customers will park anywhere along the streets. And it is a upper mid-scale hotel, Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott, so you're not going to have the clientele, you know, paying $200, $250 a night that are going to want to party all night long. I'd be more concerned about the Airbnb with the condos around there than anything else. And I'm pretty sure the lady selling the Poston apartments probably didn't market her condos as a non-prominent location. So anything off of Weston Avenue is definitely prominent and deserves the same treatment as anything else. Thank you.
Just one statement. I mean, we keep hearing this, that we're not conforming to the UDO, and I'd like planning to talk about how we do conform to the UDO.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and because we have several architects, I'm going to let them weigh in on this to start us off. Commissioner Goffel?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate that. Yeah, I guess, I guess where I am, I'm kind of inclined to go along with it. I think they're putting it inside the envelope. We do, the, they will have to, on the elevation and facades, will have to meet the UDO standards, I think, and be approved by that, is my understanding. Is that correct?
That's correct. They would go in front of the DRC for the UDO.
I do have a quick question for the owner. I think last time we talked about trying to activate the street level, is any, what are we going to have on the street at that corner?
We're not going to have any active retail restaurant space, just because of, you know, the Hill Company is eventually going to develop the Piggly Wiggly and everything that is basically in our parking lot, it's going to have heavy retail, restaurant, parking, office. So we just don't, you know, we just didn't decide to put anything there, and because we took all the parking underground, it kind of, you know, it changed the way and the space that we have, depending on, you know, the lot size that we had. And, you know, and that would kind of contradict the opposition. We wouldn't want to add a restaurant or retail, because if you don't want, you know, people not parking on the streets or having excess travelers, then you wouldn't want the restaurant or retail space.
That's, I'll listen to what the other commissioners have to say.
Commissioner Hagendier?
For the record, I'm not an architect.
I know you're not.
And there was the one, yeah, I kept hearing residential, and based on what I've seen here, the, this is, the SP is being required because of the floor area, the FAR. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the SP, the use is permitted by the base zoning, the other standards are consistent with the base zoning, and the SP, aside from the FAR, and the SP defaults to both the UDO and the base zoning for anything that the SP doesn't speak to specifically. So the difference is the floor area ratio.
So that's the only reason they're having to have an SP for this purposes?
That's correct.
And because they, we did, because they lowered the height, and there was something brought up earlier about being some inconsistencies. Can you address that question of stories versus height?
Sure. So the UDO, and Andrew will jump in if I go awry here, but the UDO includes some principles and guidance-type discussion for the various portions of the UDO. It also includes a regulatory table. I think the UDO has to contemplate a range of different uses that might happen in each of those sub-districts. And as you know, different uses often have different floor-to-ceiling heights typically, which might affect the number of stories. So the regulatory table, the 90 feet that you're hearing about, that does not include a limitation on stories. A lot of the policy documents and parts of the UDO do speak to stories, but the regulatory table just speaks to 90 feet.
90 feet. So it could be 90 feet and six stories, or 90 feet and eight stories, if you can squeeze it in.
Depending on the needs of the use.
Really vertically challenged.
Right.
Or vertically inclined people, however you choose to say that.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. And I think that was really the only thing that came up that was kind of hanging out there as an issue. I think I'll listen to the rest of the folks, but I'm in time to go with the architects on this one, which is rare.
There's an architect.
Yeah.
I am an architect. I do commend applicant for, I know that that was one of the things I was pushing for was to go down. So I appreciate you guys looking into that and putting the parking below ground. And so I, and using that tool to get the building height lower and meeting the 90-foot requirement. So the only question I have is just, do you mind just describing one more time the FAR that they're going for? Because I wrote down five and then three. Do you mind just doing that one more time for me?
So the, I'll start with the ORI base zoning, which is what would govern FAR on this site today because the UDO does not speak to it, is allows an FAR of three. The SP includes a standard that would have the FAR be five. Now, when you actually calculate the square footage that they've listed on the SP relative to the area of this site, the calculation comes out with an FAR of 4.14. So the SP standard of five, they've left themselves some room to work there. Staff's condition would be that the FAR be 4.25. In other words, no need to be so much over what you've shown us. But it would avoid having to come back if there's a minor difference in the square footage as they finalize the design of the project and have to meet some of those UDO standards as they kind of shape the building, so.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'm kind of following the line with my, with Ron, my fellow architect here. I feel like just based on the requirements of the site and the neighborhood, I do understand the community's feeling about it. But at the same time, especially the graphic that show the potential mass that could also be happening in another area, I think this is actually a better solution for it right now. And once again, I do appreciate you guys putting all the parking below grade. And kind of like with you two, I think this is one time it's probably good that the sidewalk is not super activated, that does kind of keep it a little bit less residential, less commercial. So I'm, right now, I'm prone to go, vote positive for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Sims?
This one is tough. And I'm not an architect, so this whole idea of FAR, three-point, whatever. But I know enough about kind of preserving the character and the preserving neighborhoods to know that FAR is not the best indicator. It's really more of the design that... So I'm not too upset about whether we have 4.2 or five or three as I am that we actually preserve the character of this neighborhood. And so I really am going to have to yield to our architects here. Want to hear what else they have to say.
Commissioner Diaz?
So I'm familiar with the UDO and my biggest concern was the comments that were saying that this wasn't conforming to the UDO. So I looked it up really quick and I trust planning. But, you know, just to make sure, you know, to confirm that this is a use that's allowed by the UDO, you know, planning has already reviewed it and the analysis they have done says that it is. So, you know, we can trust them and we can say that, especially with the project, following all the other rules and not needing a modification, I think that's huge. And I think that's showing initiative to try to comply and try to fit in with the character of the area. So this UDO isn't new, so, you know, whatever was going to come into place was going to look similar, maybe not the architecture, but the building mass was going to look similar to it. So I think my biggest concern is that it looks similar in character. And since we got this great video that showed us that it will, then, you know, I'm okay with it. And I know that it's not residential, but in the UDO, commercial and mixed use is allowed. And this is the core, so it's conforming to it. And I, and as far as FAR, like everybody else said, I'm more interested in how the building mass looks and it fits with the rest, so I'm okay with it.
Council Lady Allen?
Thank you. I certainly appreciate the concerns of the neighbors and I also appreciate the effort that the owners have gone to to push the parking into the ground as we asked. Just trying to think my way through what the concerns are. Character is one that we've talked about. My understanding is someone could put an office building with the correct FAR that could take up the same block of space and the same view location simply by having taller stories. I mean, from what I can tell, the same envelope could actually go there without changing that. I mean, if your floors are taller, right, then your floor area ratio can be three because you've got 15-foot tall.
I will be the first to admit I'm not a designer. So, but you can, working with the area of the site and how much you spread the floor area out, you know, horizontally versus going up, the floor area can be used to achieve different configurations of buildings. So exactly what a floor area of three would look like, obviously this particular plan is looking for more floor area because of the spread out to still achieve that height. If someone were to work with the existing floor area of three, but the same height, it might be that the building occupies less of the street frontage, say. It's a narrower building in that sense. But there are many ways that you could fit those variables together to come up with a number of different site designs. But yes, someone could build a 90-story office building here under the UDO potentially as well.
90-foot tall, six-story.
Yes, please.
Right, right. Yeah, gotcha. And that's, I mean, it seems like in terms of physically how big it could be, that's not necessarily a departure from what could be there. And as the Traffic and Parking Commission said, an office building there would actually be a much bigger issue traffic-wise at rush hour, both morning and afternoon, and traffic is clearly a concern. I mean, I think the statement that the hotel use is, tends to happen at different times of day, which makes it less of an impact, to me is, is an important response to the concern about traffic as opposed to the office building that could go there and generate a whole lot of traffic at the time exactly when everyone else is trying to get out to go to work. And then one question I would ask is there was a reference to lighting. Is it possible to add a condition just that the lighting be sensitive to the neighborhood or that it be downward-directed, dark skies compliant, for example, or other things that the owner might agree to?
So I would say certainly you as the planning commission would have the authority to add conditions that you felt were appropriate to support a recommendation that you choose to make. The SP does not speak to lighting specifically. So it would default to the lighting requirements that are in place in ORI zoning. Or I'm going to look at Andrew, does the UDO?
There's no lighting.
Okay, so there's no specific lighting standards in the UDO. So unless you were to add something, it would be what the base zoning.
I mean, there is currently language in the code about light trespass, I know, and maybe that's sufficient to supply.
Counselor, if I might, we may
Please do.
draw on some of the knowledge from our architects that are here about how you can maybe require them to follow dark skies guidelines that may be out there. I'm not familiar with, but perhaps.
Dark skies?
Dark skies.
Because it's an SP and you can give some guidance, certainly to the DRC, I think, would be the right way to do it and do it in a way that's still flexible so that we're not pre-prescribing the lighting for them in a way that would be having difficult to articulate right now.
Right, which is not my intention. That was one concern.
But giving the DRC some direction through language in the SP. But again, I don't know if y'all
I mean, I'm comfortable just with mushy language saying that the lighting be sensitive to the neighborhood or something, but...
And there are standards in the zoning code for lighting. I don't know.
Yeah, I'll summarize briefly, but the, in general, for this property or any property in the zoning district, site lighting shall be shielded so that substantially all directly emitted light falls within the property line. And talks about the illumination permitted to cross the boundary of the property. No illumination shall produce direct incident or reflected light that interferes with the safe movement of vehicles, and it goes on from there. So there are some basic standards that we'll meet regardless, but yes.
In the code already.
And I, and sorry to contradict Andrew, but there is parking lot lighting in the UDO. So that might help.
Some guidance for that.
Guidance, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but if they're concerned about the lighting coming, you know, being close to the residents.
I mean, what you, I think what you described would be pretty sensitive to the neighborhood, just that, those requirements. We could also part of, you know, with the conditions that they're going to have to bring the drawings back anyway, we could have a, you know, part of your review to make sure that that is complied to. I don't think we need to do anything extra with it.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that is also addressed. So that being said, you know, it's nice when everybody's happy at the end and I'm not sure we'll totally get to there, but I do feel like that some major changes have been made responsive to most of the concerns that were addressed at the previous public hearing and that the actual nature of this creates a better possibility to deal with the concerns that have been addressed here than an office building in the same spot would. So I think I'm supportive.
Okay. Yes, please.
Am I correct in saying that the only thing that they're out of compliance with with the UDO is the FAR?
So not quite. The UDO actually is silent on the issue of floor area. And when that's the case, we go to the base zoning. So in the sense, it's inconsistent with what the base zoning would permit, which is why they have requested this specific plan zoning.
I had something I wanted to ask about for the valet. Does it show anywhere? Do we know where it's going to be designed? Or if we could put a condition that if it will be on the street or, you know, to not block sidewalks and things like that?
So there's a recommendation as part of the traffic and parking recommendation and conditions that they actually have to apply to traffic and parking for the valet approvals and such. So that will be vetted as part of the process.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone want to make a motion? It is challenging. I mean, I do know, I'm sensitive to the neighbors. Those are some very narrow streets for this. But when you see what's potentially coming to that whole area, I don't think this project is going to be the biggest issue. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve specific plan 2017 SP 20-1 with staff's recommendations and conditions and disapprove without approving all conditions.
Nicely done. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries.
There were cookies. Patrick, item 11?
The next item on this evening's agenda is item 11. This is a request to change zoning from R6 to CS to RM15. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. The property is located at 622 Crowley Drive, west of the terminus of Deal Avenue. Contains a total of 2.64 acres. It contains a duplex along the frontage of Crowley Drive and 13 mobile home dwelling units to the rear of the property. The current zoning for the property is one and two-family residential, R6, which requires a minimum 6,000 square foot, is intended for single-family dwellings and duplexes. And CS, commercial service, which is intended for retail, consumer service, financial, restaurant, office, self-storage, light manufacturing, and small warehouse uses. Here you can see that the property contains two separate policies. T4 Urban Neighborhood Center, which is located along the frontage of Crowley Drive to the west. T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance, which is located in the remainder of the site to the east. The T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance policy is intended to preserve the general character of urban neighborhoods as characterized by their development pattern, building form, land use, and associated public realm. Where not present, enhancements are made to improve the pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular connectivity. The T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance policy is intended to preserve, enhance, and create urban neighborhood center, excuse me, let me go back. The policy to the left on the west is T4 Urban Neighborhood Center, which I've previously covered. And then on the right is T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance. The maintenance portion is intended to preserve the general character of urban neighborhood maintenance. And the urban center portion is intended to preserve, enhance, and create urban neighborhood centers that serve urban neighborhoods that are generally within a five-minute walk. And the T4 Neighborhood Center areas are pedestrian-friendly areas generally located at intersections of urban streets that contain commercial, mixed-use, residential, and institutional land uses. Infrastructure and transportation networks may be enhanced to improve pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular connectivity. Here you can see the building footprints and a closer aerial view of the property. The property is surrounded by a mixture of land uses primarily within the neighborhood maintenance policy area. Careful consideration must be given to transitions to existing lot patterns which can be achieved through a design-based zoning. A design-based zoning would allow for coordination between the two policies and ensure, and would ensure that a site plan met the goals of both land use policies for the site. Crowley Drive and Knoll Avenue are both local streets. These streets provide a vehicular connection to Robertson Avenue located to the north. The closest transit stop to the site is located 1.4 miles away along Charlotte Avenue in a southeast direction. Given the unique access challenges presented by the site, a design-based zone district would provide the necessary tools to coordinate access in an east-west manner. Without a design-based zone district, there is no assurance of public street connections being created resulting in a disconnected and disjointed street network. The next two images will show Knoll Avenue, which you see here, and then Crowley Drive. So you can see that neither of these streets contain sidewalks or bike lanes. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to disapprove as staff recognizes the mixture of uses and the various types of residential dwellings. And without a design-based zone district, we would not be able to ensure that we achieve the goals of both policies.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. And the applicant will have 10 minutes and you can reserve two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal.
Okay. I'm Roy Dale, Dale &amp; Associates, 516 Heather Place. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I feel very comforted that I'm surrounded by friends, which is pretty cool. And truly, I have no speech prepared. I have no idea what I'm going to say about this. I am absolutely going to wing it. When people contact our office about a zoning, the very first thing we look at is the land use policy. That's the first thing we do. Someone may come to me and say, "Roy, I want to put 20 units here." I look at the land use policy and say, "Forget it. You need to go somewhere else." Once we get past the land use policy thing, then we usually talk to the staff. We talk to the council member and we go to the community. And I'm a former council member and y'all know that, I'm sure. And I would say my number one allegiance is probably to that council member. And it's probably based just upon my experience of being in the council and trusting that council member to do what I think is best. And, you know, the community is right there behind that. Generally, the council member listens to the community and I like to listen to the community, too. So that's like number one and two to me. I like working with the staff. I think having a recommendation or approval is important. And I like, I try my best to make that happen. Sometimes it just doesn't happen. And I have to go back to the council member. In this case, this item was actually scheduled to be on the agenda two weeks ago. The council member wasn't here. She asked that this be deferred. Well, she's not here today either. But she has requested a bill to be drafted on this. She's going to process this through the council. And she'll probably make changes. And she may do things within the council level, which she should do, listening to her community. But it puts her at a little bit of a disadvantage when she has a plan that starts off recommended at disapproval. And when I look at this and I look at the land use policy, and when you look at the property itself, it doesn't show it on this map, but you can clearly see this is a trailer park. a trailer park, the property to the south is RM20, the property to the north is R6. Rezoning this property to RM15 absolutely is concurrent with the land use policy. There's no question about that in my mind. If there had been a special policy placed on this, these properties that requested the design-based zoning, I'd say sure. But that's simply not the case. This RM15 zoning falls in line with what's there. If you say, "Well, it's neighborhood maintenance policy, let's preserve the character of what's there," that's going to be RM20 and a trailer park. So I think RM15 is, is fine. There are bulk standards in RM15 zoning, and, and so it provides a lot of the elements that you're going to be looking for within your land use policies. If someone's developed a property, they're going to have to put sidewalks, curbs, and gutters. They're going to have to provide the things that you want, and this will create a mixture of building types and a mixture of housing, which is part of what your policy is based upon. So I don't see any reason why this should be recommended at disapproval because it doesn't match the land use policy. So I think the question really sort of boils down to, well, it's sort of a control thing. Fortunately, my wife is married, I'm not married to a control freak, but I know a lot of my friends are. And so I think it, probably when the staff looks at this, they probably say, "You know what? We'd like to ensure that we have X, Y, or Z." Well, you know what? Sometimes you're going to have to leave your faith to that council member. And that council member has had a multitude of community meetings on this. She's all over this. She knows what she's going to do. She may come back with something else, but she's simply asking for this to proceed as, as proposed currently. And again, I think to, to make a recommendation of disapproval based upon not feeling comfortable or because you can't control exactly how this is going to turn out, I think that's the wrong, the wrong way to approach this. This clearly meets the land use policy. I don't think there's any doubt or question in my mind about that. It's neighborhood maintenance. RM15 zoning is exactly in between the RM20 below and the R6 above. So I'm going to, I know she's had a lot of community meetings on this. I would be surprised if anyone's here to speak in opposition. There may be someone here that didn't come in, attend one of the community meetings. But the council member supports the process in which she's moving this, this plan. I don't know if there's anything else I can say other than I always appreciate being here. Again, I'm with friends. Sometimes we disagree on things. We try to agree on everything. It doesn't work out that way a lot of times, or not a lot of times, very rarely, quite honestly. But in this case, I just think recommending a disapproval is probably the not, not the right message. And I'll hold two minutes in case anyone is here in opposition or if I hear anything different.
Thank you. We'll make sure you have two minutes. And is there anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition?
So, I mean, I'm just sort of saying, that sort of makes my point. There's no one here in opposition to this zone change request, because the council member has done a very good job here. She may make some changes. And is it appropriate for me to talk the two minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. So I won't speak two minutes.
It's fine.
Yeah, okay. So, so anyway, there's no one here in opposition. Council member wants this to be moved forward. I wish she was here to say this herself. I know staff has probably talked to her, and if you need to talk to staff, they can probably, you know, discuss with you what discussions have gone on with, with the council member. But I don't want her to have to have a bill, go on second reading, recommended disapproval. She's probably going to make some changes to this. It may very well come back to you. But I just think it's a disadvantage for her to have her disapproved recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we declare the public hearing closed. And how about vice chair? Would you like to go first? Are we...
Sure.
All right.
Well, and I have an issue that is actually not totally related to the, to the zoning request, and that is, you know, as we're looking for more and more land to develop in the city, these mobile home parks are one of the remaining sources of a significant chunk of land, but that's also low-income housing. And while it's not the kind of quality low-income housing that we should have, it is still a source of affordable housing. And so I struggle with seeing a proposal for 39 units that does not indicate any attention to affordable or workforce housing. I would like to see that, I guess, addressed in a specific plan, if that is what had gone forward. But some acknowledgement of the fact that we are pulling out affordable housing units and, and that is kind of going against some of our other planning principles right now. But I also, from the pure analysis, agree with staff's thinking that having a little bit more control is not a bad thing, especially as these neighborhoods start to transition quickly. Making sure that we do enforce good design guidelines is going to help make sure that we kind of keep some control over how they're, how they're going, which I think is needed and what we're seeing has gone wrong in a lot of our neighborhoods to date.
Commissioner Dibbs?
I'm kind of, you know, I follow it. I actually, this is one I think would have been easier to go through if we had a little bit more description of it, at least for me, anyway. I'd be a little, like you said, I'd be, especially because of, you know, the need for workforce or affordable housing, this could be, and this could be what they're planning, and we just don't, probably not, but it could be what they're planning. I think this will be a little more information. So just based strictly off of the zone change is hard to do. You know, this is one, if we saw what they're planning, I, we might be, I'd be a little bit more, you know, interested in it. But not having any clue, based strictly on zoning, I don't feel real comfortable approving it right now.
Commissioner Sims?
I really go along with the staff's recommendation. I think they did a splendid job in this. I am a little concerned that we, I think the job of the commission is to control. And although I have great faith in our elected officials, she hasn't been here, I don't know really what she wants, and I have nothing to go on other than the zoning change. And so although I have great faith, like I said, in our people and, and you, with what we've been given, I don't think we have an option but to go with the staff.
Commissioner Diaz?
I'm a little torn on this one because I'm trying to figure out why RM15 doesn't meet the policy. I know that it's because we're looking for something that is more design-based, and I understand that, but I'm still a little confused on that. And also just considering the fact that it's between two different policies to this lot, and so it, it makes it hard to also, you know, look at one policy, one zoning district and, and analyze it with two different policies. To me, I think that's hard for me to wrap around. So, I don't know. I feel like, yes, we, I know this is something that we could benefit from if we have the great, a great design, but at the same time, it comes down to, I don't know. I'm really torn on this one. I think I'm just going to have to wait and hear what everybody else has to say.
Counselor.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, the council member's not here. It would help me a lot to, to hear from her specifically what sort of changes she might be contemplating, and if they might be better served by an SP as opposed to just a straight rezoning. Mr. Sloan?
Well, if she does have things that she wants to add to it, then it's going to be an SP. She's not going to be able to do it to just a base zone.
Right. There's nothing to add.
To rezone it base, so I don't know what that was all about. That doesn't make any sense. It would be an SP.
So I, I would just say, I mean, to me, it makes sense if, if the underlying policy is, is neighborhood center and neighborhood maintenance, and we're not maintaining the existing zoning or building commercial, I can see how the staff came to the conclusion that it's not consistent with the, with the policy. I mean, I would either say defer again and let's hear from the council member, or, or stop this train and go back to a regulatory SP that gives us more idea of what the council member has in mind.
So anytime we talk about policy, it's helpful for me to remember what our job is as a commission. If we find that something is inconsistent with policy, we are prevented from recommending approval of it. And I think there are some pretty strong disagreements between staff and Mr. Dale about whether it is consistent with policy. And I hope this is not an unfair question of staff, but I'd be interested in hearing specifically what about this, the zone change, is inconsistent with both policies?
So, for consistency with policy, and as we state in the staff report, we don't feel that the RM15 would contain appropriate design bulk standards to give us appropriate transitions to all of the various things that we see around us. Also, because of the site, the problem with access, when we have two local roads, we feel that to get an east-west connection would be very important here. And in order to do that and coordinate all of the goals of each policy, that only can be done with a specific plan that we can review and push all of those principles against our policies and make sure that everything is consistent.
Well, I mean, that makes sense to me. I, I wanted, I guess, to hear something that would allow me to kind of move a little bit more in Mr. Dale's direction since he seems to be so intent that it is consistent with policy. And I, I'm not sure I, I see where I can get there. So if I think and I do that it's inconsistent with policy, I would be in favor of recommending this approval.
I think I'm going to go along with what my fellow commissioners are saying. It's a, it's a complex set of issues around here, surrounded by a lot of different kinds of things going on. I'm going to generally default to staff to interpret it, and so I'm inclined to go along with the staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Hagan?
Just for fun, a couple of questions. So this is one lot, 205, 265, correct? One lot?
Split zoned.
Split zoned? Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. It's so, we, we don't normally have one lot with two different policies covering it. Do we?
Yeah, there's split policy. Let me say that. But it's also, is it split zoned?
Yes.
It's split zoned and split policy.
And so the policy probably mirrors what the zoning is on the property.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. That makes, that makes more sense. So we, and, and what we heard is, and we can see, is we have RM20 below. So I guess my question is, if this was being proposed for the lot below it, based on the current zoning, RM20 would be allowed, mistake the statement, it would be, they could do that, this same project and then lots below. Is that correct?
Could you...
Well, it's RM20, so if you look at the lots below, they're 268, it could do, they could do this project at RM20. They're asking for RM15 for this.
That's correct.
Right. And RM20 is below it. The lot's below it.
Yes. To the south.
To the south.
Just to clarify, one of the things that we will look at is maintaining character. And as you can see, what's challenging is here you have a mixture of different types of uses, all trying, you know, sort of coming towards Robertson Avenue. And so one of the things that we would look at is transitions and respectful transitions and circulation. So it's not necessarily to say that this is or isn't appropriate within this policy. I think sometimes, given locational characteristics, you can get there with the policy.
I think that's what the applicant was trying to...
Yeah.
Say, was you've got RM20 below and RM6 above, or something to that effect. And that's, this is, 15 was what they felt made sense for them.
So as you say, I mean, here, you know, you've got, you know, multifamily to the south. You also have a lot of single-family here.
And is this a regulatory SP under the Crowley Court? The one below that?
No, that was a regular SP.
A regular SP?
Yes.
Okay.
With preliminary...
Because that looks very similar to what we're trying, I think they're trying to get to on this, on this current lot.
Yeah. So I think, as you say, you could possibly have this, an intensity that is similar to this zone district that fits policy. I think the site is asking for a little more in terms of the circulation and also in terms of how it transitions to the maintenance policy to the north.
Got it.
As well as elsewhere. And so that's, it's not sort of a blunt, we don't want to apply a blunt instrument to say this particular zoning is absolutely not consistent with policy. I just think it needs a little bit more.
Okay. And the current use of the property, just for my own education, with a mobile home park, is that allowable within this current, or do we have an...
It's not consistent with the current zone.
Okay. So it's, it's currently out of zone?
That's correct.
Which is to say, I suspect that it is a legally non-conforming use of that property.
Yeah, legally non-conforming use is what I was looking for, but my brain wasn't getting there. Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to support staff's disapproval of the zone change.
So there's been a motion to disapprove. It's a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the disapproval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it? It's disapproved. We are on to item 23, historic. Bob, well, first of all, that finishes our calendar, right? Our agenda? Perfect. We're on item 23. It's not a midnight night. So historic.
Just, I may have mentioned it last time, but we're in the middle of doing some extra workshop on building signage and illumination right now. So we're, it hasn't been planned yet, but there will be a charrette that will be soon that we plan to get more into that specifically on the downtown district.
There's, there's been a question. What is a charrette?
What is a charrette? Because I want to go. I just don't know what that is.
You know, just come and you'll find out.
Okay. Make sure you invite me.
Well, I'll tell you, this is a lot of fun. No, it's, it's like a workshop where we're, we're going to invite, we'll invite people in so that they can be part of it. Signage, manufacturers are going to come and do a show and tell, so we're, so yeah.
Perfect. Perfect. Parks?
Nothing new, mostly. Just wanted to mention that as part of the Parks Board, I'm also going to serve on the Greenways for Nashville Board. So my first, my first meeting was yesterday. And it's really, it's really great. This is the first time they're having somebody, somebody from the Parks Board to sit in on the board, some kind of playing, you know, planning and Parks Board on there. So it's great to hear what they have to say.
Perfect. Executive Committee report.
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything, except this summer, I will say that please look at your schedules and your vacations, and we need to try to make sure that we have quorum, so I want to remind everyone to plan your vacation around the Planning Commission. Mr. Director?
Nothing tonight.
And anything from the council?
I'll just say, we are, we are deep in the budget process, and we've had great presentations from all the departments, and there are a number of the departments that have made very worthy requests or, or let us know that they could do more if they had more. And we will scratch our heads and put pencil to paper and see if we can find funds to make some of that happen, but it will, it will be challenging.
All right.
And also, one more thing. The Planning Committee is planning, is calling a joint meeting of planning codes and hospitality to meet on June 21st to talk about potential amendments to the short-term rental bill, which was approved by this commission, but then deferred at council. So we're still discussing what possible mention amendments might be appropriate to that to some degree in light of what the state legislature might provide input on. So just trying to come up with something that will work over the long haul. So that's June 21st, and then that will go before the planning, I mean, before the full council in July.
All right. Thank you for the report. Seeing nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn? Or adjourn?
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.